Item number four, public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. And presenters must have signed in. Dave, you had put down item number eight. Do you want to talk now or wait till item number? Wait till it, okay. Is there anybody else that did not sign up for public comments that wants to speak? Okay. Item number five, which is fitting because I just came from talking to future fire chiefs. Presentation by the Milton Fire Department regarding paramedic services and more. Okay, so whoever's up first.
Basically, what we're going to do tonight, myself and Deputy Chief Maury are just going to give a brief overview of the fire department in general, our general operation, how we, how we do things, why we do things the way we do. Try to educate you just a little bit on some frequently asked questions that we get from time to time. And then Deputy Chief Maury is going to talk to you about the recently started paramedic program. This is just a little thing that we kind of try to instill into our members when they start. We got a recruit class starting right now. We hired eight new people. This is a sign that hangs on the Anchorage, Alaska Fire Department Training Academy and it says, "I'm not here for me, I am here for we, and we are here for them." So we try to instill that into our people when they come on, that what we're doing is really about the community and the citizens that we serve and not ourselves. So we're not a full-time fire department. We have full-time coverage with part-time employees. We staff the department 24/7. I'll get into that a little bit more. Then in addition to that, we also have what we call POCs, or paid-on-call firefighter, and EMTs. We run about 900 to 1,000 calls a year. That varies up and down from year to year. And we're jointly owned by the city and the town, as you all know. We're governed by the Joint Fire Commission. And we, our response area covers about 70 to 80 square miles. We not only cover the city and town of Milton, we cover most of Harmony Township, Section Alima Township, Johnstown Township, and a small, a small section of Koshkannan Township. In addition to our own area, we also are in a MABUS agreement with all the other departments in Rock County, and we all provide each other mutual aid whenever that's requested. And our roster fluctuates. It's been down recently as low as 38, but it usually fluctuates somewhere between 40 and 50 people. What we do, fire, fire suppression, we put fires out. We do EMS and rescue, code enforcement, we're out doing inspections, making sure businesses are up to code. Public education, public relations, we provide. We'll go out and do talks. We'll do education on fire safety. Usually in October, we're out speaking to all the schools, the grade schools. Any type of prevention that we need to be done when that's requested. Training, we train four nights a month. In addition to the training that's required to get started, we do social gatherings for the members. And special events, anything that we're requested to do. Fundraising, we have an association, the Milton Area Emergency Services Association. They do a lot of fundraising and they raise money and buy equipment for the department. We do all this with no full-time employees, as I mentioned before. Everybody here is a part-time employee. Most everybody here works somewhere else full-time. Our staffing, as I mentioned before, is all part-time employees, but we do it with, we have three people on every day, 24/7, 365. Firefighter EMTs is what we try to have on, but not everyone that works there is certified to do both fire and EMS. The majority are, but not everyone is. Our part-time staffing is supplemented with paid-on-call personnel, and that is really the key to getting all the things out the door that we need. Yeah, the three people that we have there every day do a great job in getting the ambulance out quickly, or that first-out engine out quickly. But after that, the bigger calls that require more pieces of equipment, more apparatus, we really rely heavily on the paid-on calls. They're not required to be anywhere, they're not required to be in the city, they're not required to be at the station, they come from wherever. They have a pager or an app on their phone that alerts them of the call. They stop what they're doing, hopefully, and come to the station, and then we get the other pieces of equipment out. We obviously share a chief right now with the Janesville Fire Department. Their process for a new chief is going on. We met the candidates today. We have three part-time deputy chiefs at the Milton Fire Department. Deputy Chief Maury, he's in charge of EMS. I'm the deputy chief of administration, and Jeremy Parker is the deputy chief of operations. We both, all three of us are required to work 16 hours a week in the office, and then we do, each of us does about 120 hours a month of what we call duty officer time. Those 120 hours are not paid. They are just each, every night, one of us has to be available and cover what we call covering the car. So we take the command car, command truck home with us. Sometimes when the weather's bad, we just leave it at the station. But there's always a chief that's available to respond to calls when needed. In addition to that, we also have Jenny, who is our part-time administrative assistant. And she works about 36 to 38 hours a week. As of right now, we have three on every day. We like to have everybody that works able to do both, meaning they can do both fire and EMS. That way, if we do get a fire, the people that are riding the ambulance can jump onto the engine and go out and do what they need to do to fight a fire. The same thing goes the other way. We want at least two of those people, they have to be EMTs or paramedics, effective February 1st, so that they can get the ambulance out the door. Like I said, the goal is to have all three on there. Those people that are there every day have various duties. They maintain the equipment, they do daily checks on the equipment, they maintain the station clean, all the custodial work. They do training. They assist with, they assist our fire inspector with inspections. That not only helps him get more inspections done, but it also gives our people the ability to get out into the businesses and get a look at them when conditions are good, in case we have to go there when conditions aren't so good. We might learn something or have a general idea of the layout of those buildings. So it's a big benefit. Obviously, the part-time people that are there provide a faster response time because they're there, they don't have to come from another location. The primary duties of those part-time people is the ambulance, just because it goes out more. We run about 80% EMS calls compared to about 20% fire calls. And somewhere in there is a mixture of both, where we're both going. We'll talk about that in a little bit. I talked a little bit about this already, but the paid-on-call people, how they respond. The difficult thing that we have here is a community our size, we have a lot of calls, we're a pretty busy fire department. We are, the two other fire departments in this county that are similar in size to us and run volume are the Town of Beloit and the Edgerton Fire Protection District. Town of Beloit has, I believe, nine, nine full-time firefighters and three full-time chiefs. Edgerton has six, four?
Five.
Five, five full-time employees and then a full-time deputy chief. So we're right up there as far as run volume and numbers, and very, very similar departments, but we're the only ones that are doing it without any full-time employees right now. It's very difficult to meet the day-to-day requirements. As far as getting, you know, we try to find people that live close to the station that can respond back in a, in a, in a short period of time to get those other units out the door when we need to, and that's a challenge in today's world. Some of the required staffing, we get a lot of questions on this. Why do we have to have the amount of people that we have on certain types of calls and what all is required? So this kind of addresses some of that, and Deputy Chief Maury will get into more of the paramedic thing. But on your routine medical call, we're going to need a minimum of two EMTs that take the ambulance out. They're going to provide usually basic life support. There's no special or advanced care needed for these patients. They might be feeling ill or have back pain or something like that. Usually, it's a non-life-threatening injury for your routine medical call. An advanced medical call, depending on how that call comes in and the information that we get, it might be a little more serious, might be a little more life-threatening. The two EMS personnel on the ambulance that day may take the third person with them, or they may request an engine, or an engine may be automatically dispatched, depending on the nature of the call. Once the EMS get to the scene, they can make that determination and request more resources as needed. Now, in the past, we would, if it was a call requiring advanced care, we would contact Janesville and call, we'd request a paramedic intercept, meaning the city of Janesville would respond up here with a paramedic ambulance, able to provide that higher level of care. Now that we're able to do that here, majority of those, we don't have to ask for that anymore. So, and again, Deputy Chief Maury will talk about that. Some of those calls may be like chest pains of cardiac nature, difficulty breathing, and possibly internal bleeding. So why do we, why do we send an engine on ambulance calls? We get that one a lot. When I call an ambulance, why does a fire truck have to do, have to go? There's a lot of things that need to get done, or a lot of potential things that could happen in a situation where we have an engine respond. And again, some of these are automatically dispatched, some are requested by the crew when they get on, on scene. Larger people, people that are hard to move, maybe the conditions in the home are difficult for two people to manipulate a patient through that, we're going to call an engine that just provides a safer condition for not only the patient, but for our people as well. Maybe somebody's upstairs, downstairs, in a basement, things like that. If someone's unconscious, it's dead weight, and they're very difficult to move, and that may be also an indication of a more serious problem where they're going to need some more hands. Sometimes we have to force entry into residence. People are incapacitated to the point where they can't let us in, so the engine has the tools and equipment to force entry. Sometimes patients want to fight, whether they're under the influence of drugs or alcohol, or possibly just, you know, incapacitated or having a medical condition. Sometimes we have to be able to restrain those patients safely so that we don't injure them, or they don't injure themselves or us any further. And some of it's based on past experience with the patient. Maybe we picked this patient up previously, we know something about them where they want that extra help. This is kind of hard to see, but this is a, this is would be a typical pulseless non-breather call. This is not our department. This was a thing that was put out in one of the magazines quite a while ago, but it shows you, this would be a pulseless non-breather. So there's, what am I seeing, six, seven people in that picture right there, and everybody's got a job. So it's not like we all go there and stand around and when only one person does, does things. Everybody has a job, especially in a more serious medical condition. So we have the officer that is standing up there talking to the loved one, probably getting some patient information, you know, what was the problem, when did you find the person, do they have any medical history, what do they take for medications, all that situation. While that's going on, you can see the gentleman with the phone, he's contacting medical control or the hospital. Everything we do, certain advanced things, we have to get permission from our medical director. And then they're starting IVs, starting CPR, they're placing an airway into the patient's mouth, and things of that nature. So there's a lot of things to do in those types of situations. Our structured fire response, this is just kind of what we like, this is a minimum response. For residential fire, we want two engines with three people on each engine, a tower ladder with three, one incident commander, an ambulance with two medics. If it's a rural call, we'd like at least one tender, two would be better. But usually, if it's a call in the rural, we obviously don't have fire hydrants out there, so we dispatch tenders and we take our water with us. We set, set up a portable tank and we draft water out of that. If it's a bigger fire and we need more water, then we call for help from other communities. Some of the residential fire tasks, we have to get, get our apparatus to the scene, initiate fire suppression, search and rescue. If we don't know if somebody's in, if we don't know if the house is clear, we're pretty much obligated to go in and check the house. The rule that we have is the house is not clear until we say it's clear, unless there's somebody there that can, you know, tell us 100%. We may have to provide EMS to victims or responders, ventilation, I'll show some pictures of that here in a minute. Water supply, we talked about that. Salvage, if there's things in the house that we can save, we can throw tarps, keep them from getting water or that sort of thing on them, we do that. Overhaul is where we pull ceiling and open up walls and make sure there's no fire hidden inside. We have to make sure it's completely out before we leave. We don't like to do warranty work in the fire department. That's a joke. Some other fire response that we do, brush truck, we send out two of that, an engine is always three regardless if that's a, you know, vehicle fire, dumpster fire, anything like that. We have a UTV, a Polaris Ranger that the association bought and donated to the department that has a capability of brush fires and patient movement, and we have medical supplies on that so we can put out fire with it, or we can move people. Tender can go out with one, we prefer two, but one, one is okay, and that, that basically just hauls water. Majority of brush fires are handled with a brush truck and an engine, so we don't need all that other stuff. Motor vehicle crashes, we send an ambulance, two engines. The way it's set up right now for us, we get Milton ambulance, a Milton engine, a Janesville engine, and Battalion 13, that's our battalion chief or incident commander. Severity of the crash, a number of patients, extent of injuries, hazards present determine the need for more resources. So if we need more help, we can call it. If it's multiple vehicles, multiple patients, we ask for more help. These are just some pictures of some training stuff that we've done. This is one that I'd like everybody to pay particular attention to, and this is the state training requirements. Now, there's been some changes in statute recently that we used to have a grace period, or we used to be able to determine the training needs of our personnel was by the authority having jurisdiction, or basically the fire department could determine what was acceptable and not acceptable for training. With the new, with the new changes, with the exception of fire officer, everybody has to be certified to this level before they can operate in that position. So that's, that's going to be a challenge. Most of our people are already there. There will be some people that'll have to get some more training in regard to driving and that sort of thing. But these are minimum requirements. This is just what you have to do just to get basically on the department, being able to be used. This is, some of it looks like a lot of hours, but Wisconsin is one of the lowest required training, one of the states in the country that requires the fewest amount of training hours to get certified. I want to say like we're second or third to the last, which is unfortunate, but that kind of gives you an idea. So before people can even start with us, they have to have entry-level firefighter, and then we have to have them become firefighter one before they can respond to calls. So that's a total of about 96 hours. And then every level you go up is just more hours, obviously. These are some of the training requirements. The standards referenced in SPS 330, which is the statute that regards the safety and health standards for fire departments in the state, references the National Fire Protection Association standards. And those are pretty much the same nationwide. The interesting thing is, is that people might not understand is that the training requirements, the certifications required are not different or less if you are not a career firefighter. So if you're a volunteer, a paid-on-call, a paid-on-premise, a part-time, or a career, your training requirements to get certified are all the same. We all train to the same standard regardless of the type of department that we work for. So we have two ambulances, 1340 and 1341. We staff them with two people. Effective February 1st, we have a paramedic on there now to deliver that higher level of care. Whatever level of service we're providing, it used to be advanced EMT, we had to have at least one advanced EMT on the ambulance. Now it's paramedic, we have to have at least one paramedic. If it was basic, you had to have the lowest level of training, which is EMT basic. We go to medical emergencies, traumatic injuries, crashes, industrial accidents, structured fires, law enforcement requests for standby if there's a standoff or something like that. Or sometimes law enforcement likes us to check people that they're dealing with before they take them somewhere, and we'll do welfare checks for them whenever that's requested. Behavioral health incidents, people are just having a bad day, excuse me, and they want us to come and check things out. We send our engines to every fire regardless of what type it is. We got to have a way to get water on the fire, whether it's a house fire, dumpster fire, car fire. So at least one engine goes on a lot of those calls, sometimes two. We staff them with one officer, the person that's in charge, making the, making the decisions, one person that drives. The driver of the engine also has to be able to run the pump, so it's a big responsibility. You have to get the truck and the people there safely, and you have to operate the truck efficiently, get water to come out the hoses, and it's fairly challenging the first few minutes of a call, but our people do a pretty good job. Our engines carry anywhere from 750 to 1,000 gallons of water on them. That goes pretty quickly when you're putting it out at the rate that we put it out, so we have to carry more with us. Both have 1,500 gallon per minute pumps, that means we, that's how much water we can pump in a minute, that's a lot. Ground ladders, obviously the ones that we put up by ourselves, tools, scene lights, generators, deck gun, that's the big gun on the top that sprays a whole bunch of water. And we're, basically the job of the engine is to put water on the fire, put it, put it out. It's like our giant toolbox that we carry. Our tenders, again, they basically carry water. Each of ours has 3,500 gallons, so we can carry a total of 7,000 if we have the staffing to get both out the door. So we put up, we, if all of our stuff gets out the door, we show up with about 10,000 gallons of water. That's not too bad. All right, the one we get a lot of questions on, the aerial tower. Why do you need that thing? We don't have any high-rises here in Milton. I'll get into that in just a little bit. Two of the biggest reasons we need it, number one is an elevated master stream. What I mean by that is if we got a building that's really burning heavily involved, one that we're not going to be going inside of anymore, we're basically going to try to protect the surrounding structures and things like that, we need to get a lot of water on the fire. So by an elevated master stream, we're going to put the tower ladder up, and we're going to put, we're going to apply water on the fire at a rate of about 1,000 gallons a minute. We have no other piece of equipment that will do that other than that elevated master stream. We may need it to do a high-angle rescue. The old one that we had, we actually rescued somebody working on the sign over here at the Burger King. That particular tower that we have now carries 500 gallons of water, has 1,500 gallon per minute pump, and we like to staff it with three personnel. So why do we need it if we don't have any big buildings? Sometimes we have to do what we call vertical ventilation. This is a picture of two firefighters that have climbed up on a roof and cut a hole in the roof. This is exactly what we want with vertical ventilation. We want to create a hole or an opening to let all that superheated gas, smoke, and fire out of the structure and bring it up through the roof into the atmosphere. That creates better conditions on the inside for the crews advancing in to put out the fire. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't need to be a big building, but we can use our aerial tower to go on even single-story homes if we need to. It's a safety thing for us. These firefighters, and this is not us, these firefighters are walking on the roof, there's a roof ladder there, you can see the firefighter on the left. That basically is a ground ladder that spans from the peak to the roof edge, and it helps distribute your weight so you don't go through. But on occasion, things like this happen. This firefighter has fallen through the roof up to his waist. Fortunately, as the pictures show, he gets out and he's able to walk off the roof. But having that aerial tower that we can work off of or put up to the roof and stay, we have a system in it that we can stay tethered if something were to go terribly wrong, it's just an additional safety for us. Now, we can't use it everywhere. Trees and power lines and stuff like that get in the way, but those are just a couple reasons why we need it, even though we don't have high-rise buildings and things of that nature. I talked about the brush truck already, it's a four-wheel-drive pickup that we can take off-road if needed. We don't take our engines off-road, that, bad things happen when you do that. Battalion 13 is our incident command vehicle. Every fire incident that we go to, unless it's like a minor medical call, we require an incident commander, one person that's watching over everything, calling all the shots, making the decisions, keeping our people safe. Utility vehicles, we have a couple of pickup trucks that we use to pull our boat and our trailer with the UTV. Those can also be used when people go to training and things like that, provides them a vehicle, they don't have to use their own. I already talked about the other two departments. We're always looking for ways to improve. Obviously, we like direction and input from not only the fire commission, but the council, the town board, and the citizens. I could sit here and talk all night, I love talking about the fire department, I love answering questions about the fire department. We want, we want to hear from people. So any questions anybody has, please feel free to, to ask, stop in anytime, we're always there. Call us, we're happy to, to answer the questions that you have. Obviously, we want everybody, not only the department personnel, but the community, the council, the commission, the town board, everybody working together for that common goal, and that's improvement of the department and delivering the best service that we can. Communication is always the key, we got to talk to each other, we got to stay open, transparent, and that's how we succeed. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question, Chris. You are referencing Edgerton Fire Department and the Town of Beloit.
Yeah.
As the most comparable departments. Do they give benefits to their employees, and are they full-time, part-time?
I don't know everything about the Town of Beloit. I know that their full-time employees receive benefits, they're all in the WRS. Edgerton's full-time employees are. And Edgerton has some permanent part-time employees that work 24 hours a week, who they're also, they're also in the WRS. Other than that, I don't really know as far as benefits for paid-on calls or, or anything below that. All right, thanks.
Thank you very much for coming.
All right. Good evening. Pete Maury with the Fire Department, and I'm going to go over a little bit about our paramedic service that we started in February. Won't be quite as lengthy as Deputy Chief Lucas's, but we'll get through it. So this is a lot of, there's a lot of information in these slides, but we're going to talk about the, the levels of EMT. There's EMT basic, as you can see there, it's 140 hours of classroom education along with going to the emergency department. You learn basic skills, you have a limited amount of medications to help treat these people. As you can see at the last one, once you get your license, every two years, you have to do an additional 24 hours of training on top of the 140 hours that you just completed. That's the beginning. What we were with the advanced EMT, as you can see, that is 180 hours on top of the 140 hours that you completed as a basic. Becoming an advanced EMT, the biggest things would be like IVs, giving fluid challenges, there's a couple more medicines that we could give for cardiac issues, diabetics, and different things of that nature. Once you spend your 180 hours as your advanced EMT, now an additional 42 hours in that two-year span, you have to keep your, to keep your license up. So I don't know if you guys are keeping track, but that's almost 600 hours in about two or three years to get to that level. So once you become a paramedic, I know there's a lot there, but it's basically 1,400 hours of education on top of any other education that you've had. You do 700 hours in a classroom, and you do 700 hours between riding on a paramedic ambulance, you spend time in the OR, the ER, OB, learning all the different techniques and different things of that nature. But once you become paramedic, which we started out in February, as you can see, we have an additional 50 different medications we can use. One of the big things is we have the ability to- One of the big things is, we have the ability to breathe for people using, we'll talk about it a little bit later, but breathing tubes and ET tubes. Once you've done that, as you can see, it's an additional forty-eight hours of refresher on top of the fourteen hundred hours that we have to recertify. On top of that, we have ACLS, which is Advanced Cardiac Life Support, that is basically the same class that any ER doctor, nurse, or anything takes. So, I'll sit in class with the emergency room doctors and nurses, we learn the same basic, I want to say this, the basic, the beginning of like a cardiac event, we, we learn the same techniques, our same drugs that we carry in the ambulance to help that out. And then we also have the pediatric version, which is an additional sixteen hours that we have to take every two years, and that just deals with smaller peoples, people, so there's different techniques, different equipment, and then different drug dosages. So, you know, that's an additional thirty-two, seventy-some hours we have to be educated on every two years. So, the medications that we used to, and current medications, this is prior to us becoming the paramedic level, but these are the, the medications that the As and the Bs can give. There's just a limited amount, you know, aspirin for cardiac, we do give some things for, you know, oxygen, saline. And then there's the additional drugs that we carry now in our ambulance. We carry a lot of antidesrhythmics, so if someone's having a cardiac event, chest pains, different things, we can do that. We also have medications for, to help people out breathing, we have a lot of traumatic injuries, we have medications that will help out with that. But the biggest one right here is our advanced airway. We carry endotracheal tubes. What this is, is a tube we pass into the trachea where we can secure the airway. Prior to becoming a paramedic, we just put in, they call it an eye gel, and it just kind of covers up so you can aspirate and you can have some issues. So if someone is having a cardiac event, or any type of a respiratory problem, we can secure that airway, and as, as you know, you know, within six minutes of you not breathing, you start to lose brain tissue, or, so that's why, that's the biggest one that we, you know, try to take care of. So this is, this is a little we put in there for our, our equipment upgrades. Back in two thousand seventeen, anticipating going to the paramedic level, we had to replace our current defibrillator monitors, so we bought two of them, we added a couple little things that would help us when we became paramedics. Next one is, obviously we carry narcotics, we had to purchase two safes for our ambulances. The King Vision, the next one is just, it's a laryngoscope, what it does is it helps us visual the airway, so we can place those tubes, and then our, our medications, roughly fourteen hundred dollars for, for the ambulance. The last four of them, as you can see, we were all donations by our association, that's how much our department or our, our personnel think that the upgrade to the paramedic is, is, is a great thing. We put a lot of our money in to try to get this level. So, this started way back in April of two thousand fifteen, when we had to submit some studies, eventually came back, we started working on our operational plan in eighteen, finally was approved in the end of December of last year, and then as of February first, we started our, our phase in period as, as a paramedic level. Basically, we have one year where if we do not cover the ambulance a hundred percent with a paramedic, we kind of get a grace period. So that's why we're pushing a lot with, with staffing, just having the, the amount of people there to cover the chefs, you know, we catch two chefs twenty-four hours, or excuse me, two chefs seven days a week for three hundred and sixty-five days a year, that's a lot of, a lot of volunteering that our people put in, that have jobs on, you know, on the other full-time jobs. And I just, what I talked about was the, the phase in period. Any questions? Try to go through that quick, yes, sir?
On your screening, do you also get exposed to behavioral health type of things?
Yeah, as a part of that, a part of that, there is, there's multiple phases, yeah, and we have that behavioral, and that is one of the required ones that our medical direction sets us in.
You talked about the, the things you could do now as February first, especially the cardiac.
Yep.
So each instance prior to that, every time that...
Your, your run-of-the-mill cardiac, as an AEMT, we can handle that, we have aspirin, nitroglycerin, we could start IVs, you know, to facilitate care that way. But if it started to get into like arrhythmias and some different things like that, blood pressures, then we would have to call that advanced, or that paramedic ambulance. Now with the medications and the things we carry, we can take care of that in-house, I guess, for our people.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
To you gentlemen, what would be the average response time from a call coming in to a response? In the event that you have two simultaneous events that need occurring, and you're already responding locally in one place, how, estimate or an estimate of responding to another in-town call that would require assistance?
Chief.
Your average time provided everything?
Sometimes we have to provide, you know, rely on our, our departments, Janesville or Edgerton, to possibly come in if we can't get the proper staffing on that second ambulance.
I just want to say how proud we are as a community, that all that work that went into getting us to the paramedic level, we really appreciate that. That's one of the reasons I wanted you guys to come and, and share this information, because it's not common knowledge, it's not information that we wouldn't even know if you didn't come and share it with us. So I really appreciate that, and appreciate all the work that everybody has done to make lots of improvements in the Fire Department over the years.
Thanks.
If I could just add one thing about that, all that stuff you put up there about the feasibility study and...
All right, moving on to our approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. Item number seven, discussion and possible action regarding the creation of a residential exterior improvement program.
So this is a program that has been in discussion for a little while now, that has been really fine-tuned through our Community Development Authority. This was one of the items that has been a kind of a long topic of conversation with the Community Development Authority, and, and with the mayor specifically, looking for something that we could do as a community to help out some of our residential properties that are in need of repair, but may not be able to financially accomplish that on their own. So, as the memo said, and, and I won't go through all of the details, but as the memo kind of points out, we've had a facade grant program in the city of Milton for quite some time now. And for those folks who are not aware, the facade grant program is a program that is designated for businesses in our commercial districts that allow them to make exterior improvements to their facilities, or their facades, with the goal, or the, you know, the, the goal of the program is to increase the overall aesthetic appeal of our commercial corridors, of our commercial districts. When things look better, people feel better, property values increase, creates a safer, more walkable environment. Commercial districts are really kind of the lifeblood of, of our downtown, so we want those looking as nice as possible. And if there's an opportunity for us to assist in that, we certainly would like to do so. So, the same thought process is what led us to this concept of the Residential Exterior Improvement Program. With the same kind of thoughts in mind, that the exterior of buildings, whether they be commercial or residential, but in this case residential, has an overall impact on its surrounding properties, and, and of that property itself, of course. State statutes actually defines properties that are in disrepair as blighted properties, and they talk about blighting influences. And what that means is, is when a property is in disrepair, it can have a blighting influence on its surrounding neighbors, in terms of the overall property condition of the surrounding neighbors, or the, the overall property valuation of those surrounding neighbors. So, what we're trying to do here is, is overall kind of maintain or increase the integrity of our, of some of our older residential neighborhoods, try to assist those property owners who do want to make repairs to their properties, but may not be able to financially do so. So again, the same premise applies, the thought process is, if it's good enough for the businesses, why isn't it good enough for the homeowners? So, through the work with the mayor and the CDA, we've come up with the Residential Exterior Improvement Program. And some of the important pieces of this program that I, I'd like to point out, and then we can open up for questions, is, you know, some of the immediate questions that come to mind is, well, how do we, you know, how, how do we manage this? What, what happens if Dan Nelson, who lives in a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, which is pretty close, you know, wants to, wants to replace his windows? Dan certainly has the financial wherewithal to do so, why, why doesn't he do it on his own? So that, that's the immediate response that we hear from people right away. Somebody's going to take advantage of this, somebody's going to abuse the system. And of course, with every program and every system out there, good or bad, whether it's a facade program or TIF incentives, there is that possibility. So what we've tried to do is create a criteria that limits at least the possibility for, for that abuse, or, or that kind of unnecessary government subsidy to occur. So, first, the property must be over twenty-five years of age. So there's large segments of our community right now that immediately do not qualify for that. Two, the homeowner must have lived in the house for at least five years. So there's two pieces of that. One, you need to own the home, and two, you must have lived in the home for over five years. That prevents flipping, which is rather vogue, thanks to HGTV. So again, you'd have to live in it for five years, and then, one of the last criterias is the assessed value of the home cannot be over a hundred and twenty-five percent of the average assessed home value in the city of Milton, as established by the city assessor on an annual basis. What does that mean? The average assessed value in the city of Milton is a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. A hundred and twenty-five percent of that is roughly a hundred and ninety thousand. So if your home is over a hundred and ninety thousand, you, you do not qualify for this. If it's under a hundred and ninety thousand, you only qualify if, A, you live in it, B, you've lived in it for over five years, and C, it's over twenty-five years old. So, as you add those criteria, certain pockets of the community become ineligible. The last overarching criteria, which probably, which is, is a little bit nebulous, or not, I guess, depending on how you look at it, is you must be within the geographically defined areas that are shown in the, in the, in the packet, which means you neither need to be in a TIF, or within a half mile of a TIF. That's almost the entire community, but there are areas that, that, that it's not subject to. Just a few kind of areas, and you can see that on the map. But irrespective of all that, I think one of the most important things that we need to remember is, what's the goal of the program? The goal of the program is to increase the aesthetic appeal and, and maintain property values of our residential housing stock within the community of Milton. Even if there is somebody whose house is over twenty-five years old, who's lived in the house for over five years, is within the eligible geographical boundary, and is under a hundred and twenty-five percent of the overall assessed value, somebody may say, well, that person can afford it. If the goal is to increase the aesthetic appeal of houses in the community, they'd still meet that goal if they applied for this program, and were approved by the CDA and the City Council. So that's one of the things. For some reason, there's, there's kind of this gut reaction of, oh, holy cow, what if somebody takes advantage of this? But then that question never comes up with the commercial facade program, it never comes up. I've never had anybody say, well, I don't know, so-and-so might be able to afford this. So the same thought process has kind of been in line with the, with the Community Development Authority throughout this process. So, that's the overall program, there are eligible projects, there are ineligible projects. Eligible projects must be on the exterior of the home, and must be viewable from the right-of-way, so we're not interested in replacing your back patio door. And they must be, you know, material improvements or, or repairs to the house on the exterior. So if your furnace goes out, sorry, this, this program isn't for you. If you have, have a, you know, want to replace your bay window with a conventional window, and there's nothing wrong with your bay window, this program's not, not for you. But if you want to make repairs to either portions of your exterior that are in disrepair, or broken, or, or are decreasing the physical integrity of the home, then this would potentially be a program for you.
Any questions or comments?
Just curious, um...
Could you guys turn your mics on?
The pockets that you said that it just doesn't cover?
Right.
How is that, why is that?
Because you have to be in a TIF, or within a half mile of a TIF.
So if you look at the map, that, yeah.
And that's state.
They're, they're so case. Well, that's what I'm saying, we're, we're just not picking and choosing.
No.
It must follow certain guidelines.
Yeah, because TIF is the funding source for this program, if we were to cover the entire community, a home that would apply for this, that was eligible, that met the eligibility requirements, and was approved by the CDA or the City Council, that was not within one of those geographical boundaries, the funding for that specific grant application would have to come from other, some other funding source, and in this case, it'd have to be general fund.
That, the business one that we were doing, that, that money wasn't recouped either, correct?
Correct.
And then this wouldn't be recouped?
Yes, it is a fifty percent matching grant, which means the, the grant itself would only be up to five thousand dollars, but it would have to be matched, meaning if you have a project that's eight thousand dollars, it's a fifty percent matching grant, so the grant would only cover four thousand dollars. But it's capped at five thousand, so if you have a project that's twelve thousand dollars, we still would only match five thousand. So it's the exact same criteria as the facade program.
And then just, you're looking to spend, looking to do twenty-five thousand a year, is that what?
Yeah, we've put a cap on, on it at this point, in order to kind of just make sure that we can get a handle on it, that there will be a maximum of twenty-five thousand dollars awarded annually. So it's not a matter of, we're not, we didn't want to say five grants, because some grants might be, you know, we might do three, if we did twenty-five thousand dollars, we could do ten two-thousand-dollar grants. So yes, we put a cap of twenty-five thousand dollars, so that way we can, you know, there's, there's a criteria, or at least, it, we want to make sure that it doesn't go crazy.
Yeah, and that's what we're concerned about in the CDA, when we set that cap, is that the first couple of years, you might see a lot of people interested in trying to do this, potentially, and therefore, we wanted to set some type of a cap that wasn't, that would allow for several projects, but not, you know, not keep it too few, but also not drain our resources.
And although there isn't, it's not a loan program, so we're not getting like money back, but it is an investment in our community, and that's where we see the value of, of our investment, and sharing that investment with homeowners, which we have done for years with the business community, and it's worked really well, and I, I think if you asked any of the business owners that have come to us and presented a request for a facade grant, they've been really happy and very appreciative, and it has helped our businesses, and we want to have that opportunity to help our homeowners, too.
Correct.
I, perhaps I've missed something in reading this, but are these strictly self... I perhaps have missed something in reading this, but are these strictly self-identified projects, or can they be identified by the city to encourage people to take on a project of their own?
It would be, the, the individual who applied for this, or the homeowner that would apply for this, would, would have to do it on their own fruition. We can't force someone to do it. But we certainly can suggest it to them, and what we would like to do is, in the, in the event that somebody has a code enforcement violation, or something that is in need of repair at their home, as we are working with them to remedy that situation, we will make, we would make them aware of this program that is available. So, so it would be, it would still have to be at their fruition.
But this would be available to them as part of that process?
Correct.
Okay.
As long as they're capable of getting a building permit.
Correct.
That is the one stipulation. That came up in our discussion at our last meeting, was the idea of adding it to, you know, anytime we have a code enforcement issue, that we would provide paperwork on this, to help kind of deal with some of the issues and help, help them out with that. But one of the things on there that they have to do is get a building permit in the first place, and that has certain requirements as well they have to follow.
Correct.
All right, fair enough.
The business, or you can't. The business grants come to council, is, with the residential ones like this come to council too?
Yes.
It'll also go to the CDA as well.
Yes.
First, CDA first, and then council.
I think it's pretty neat.
What happens when it's a duplex? Because you've got brown subdivision within a half a mile of the TIF district here, and there's a lot of the older condominium slash duplexes, I don't know what they were called when they were built, but a lot of those are starting to get run down. So how does that work when you have a side-by-side?
So if it is a condominium, the condominium is a separate parcel under separate ownership, and it would be an owner occupied, so therefore, they would, they, one half of the condominium could be eligible. Well, both halves could be eligible. If they both went in together, they could get two grants. If it is a duplex, though, it would not be eligible unless the, unless one half of the duplex was occupied by the owner of the duplex.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Because the criteria is you have to have lived in the home for five years. So I don't anticipate that if I own a duplex and I live in one side, that I would be eligible to apply for the other side, is that correct?
Yeah, you would, you would be, you'd be eligible to apply for the, for the duplex if you lived in it for five years, and it was over 25 years old, and it was under $190,000, and it was within the geographical boundary. You would be eligible for, for it. So if you needed to do a repair on the duplex, a roof repair, or siding repair, or windows repairs, we wouldn't look, we wouldn't look at it as, as two separate houses, we would look at it as one house. But again, you would have to live in it. Anything beyond a duplex, a four-unit, six-unit, eight-unit, would not be eligible under this program, because it throws all, because there's no, there's no six-unit that probably has somebody who lives in it for five years that's under $190,000. So we would, if, if that is something that we would like to pursue, we'd either have to look at creating a new program, or redefining the commercial facade program to include multifamily developments. But that, at this time, we just kind of wanted to start here and, and see how this program goes. We don't know. We, and we haven't set an effective date for this to start, because we want to work on some marketing materials and be able to get the word out in appropriate fashion, and I'm sure our friends in the media will help us with that. But we, you know, let's say if we have a start date on April 1st, I don't know, on April 2nd, we might have 15 applications. I don't know. I, I can tell you that in, in terms of the commercial facade program, since its inception in the early 2000s, we've had 30 facade programs, facade grants issued. So on average, that's about two to three a year. I don't know if this will follow the same pattern or not, we would have to be seen.
Can I ask a question now related to that? Let's say that I'm an individual who applies, and the $25,000 has been pretty much committed. Will that person be allowed to stay on into the next cycle, or do they have to reapply?
Um, I think, you know, I think that, that we would, depending on where it is in the year, if we open up the program on May 1st and on May 20th, you know, we've issued all $25,000, and, and they either didn't make that initial cut, or they came to us on May 21st. I think, you know, a lot of this discretion is going to rest with the CDA and ultimately with the council. A lot can change in, 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 you know, 11 months or 10 months with the condition of a home, maybe they've, maybe they've made, gone ahead and made the improvements, maybe they've moved out, maybe things have changed. So I think it, it might be have to look at a case-by-case basis. But, you know, if, if we, if we do it on a rolling calendar year, and they apply on December 30th, and the funds have been, you know, extinguished, and new funds will come in on January 1st, I don't know if we'd make them apply again. So, I, I guess I would ultimately kind of leave that up to the council and the, and the CDA.
I just want to say that I think this is an awesome program, and we have so many people out there that could probably use the assistance and the encouragement. And they probably, knowing that we have had this going on for our commercial properties, I'm sure that a lot of people will be happy that we are now doing it for our residential properties. And with that, I would like to make a motion to adopt the residential exterior improvement program.
Second.
There's a motion and a second? Anything else from anybody? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. Congratulations, Milton. I'm excited for you, all you homeowners out there. All right, discussion and possible action on the creation of a nonprofit contribution policy. Ryan, do you want to talk about this?
You would be more apt to talk about it than me.
Inga catch any I miss. Basically, after being asked to look at nonprofit contribution policy, and quite a few months of looking at, we came up with a general policy that I believe was sent out. Let's just see, I'm pulling up. We tried to look at, there was five of us on the committee, and we tried to look at it from a bunch of different perspectives, with the idea of, first of all, should we pursue down the path of providing financial, I guess, help to nonprofits or not? And after deciding that we wanted to, or we should, we started working on this policy For most part, this policy is in writing a lot of the things that we had already been doing as a city, or a city council. It requires basically a lot of the same work, but there's more in writing about what they need, what's needed to be able, to be provided for us to follow, and kind of gives us a little bit of guidance as a city council on some of the different things. So, most part, a nonprofit organization would submit an application for a request for funding, and go through the process of going through the city, as well as then finally council, they'll have to do a presentation to the council as to what their funding goes towards, and also requires a review by Dan, as well as to the finance side of it.
Who, I want to acknowledge who was on your ad hoc committee. I know that you met a lot, you know, you put in a lot of thoughtful time and effort, and I'm, I'm not sure I remember who all was on it, but you were, Inga helped with the meetings, Lisa Brown.
Maxine.
Maxine, who else? Pam Bostwick.
And Herb Stensky.
And Herb Stensky. So I really just, you know, sometimes the council has really good ideas, but we can't do everything. So when we throw together an ad hoc policy, and people commit their time and energy, we really do appreciate it, and appreciate everything that you've, you've done. I know, I, I went to one of the meetings just to kind of get things started, but I know that you spent a lot of time talking about this and debating it, and, and were very thoughtful about it, so I just wanted to say thank you for that.
I was gonna say that we had a bunch of different points of view, from completely different walks of life in a way, kind of coming, looking at this. And one other area I wanted to kind of point out on here is the criteria to be able to apply. It's program activity or service is one that's not currently provided by the city of Milton, but is congruent with a common council strategic plan, comprehensive plan, or other planning documents. And also, the program, project, and/or event recipients are not limited to the requesting organization's membership, but rather the entire community. And finally, the service, event, program, or project is not advocated political or religious viewpoint, but rather seeks to address a community need as described in another section above. So I just want to mention those are the criteria that we were created.
Dave, you signed up to speak on this, so I don't know if you wanted to chime in now, or?
I do, I'd like to make a question.
Sure, if you could come up to the podium, the usual routine, thank you.
All right, just real quickly.
And say your name.
Okay, Dave Fisher, I'm representing the gathering place here in Milton. Question for you folks, with regards to the eligibility, I would, what is the difference between point number three of the eligibility and point number two of section B in that eligibility? Can you tell me the difference of what that verbiage means for those two particular statements?
About is there a difference between the strategic plan and the comprehensive plan?
No, I'm sorry. The verbiage in, in eligibility A, number three, and B, number two.
I'll go ahead and read that, just so everyone can hear what the differences are, or hear what it is, rather. Eligibility A, three, the organization provides a community-based service, event, program, or project that benefits the greater good of the community. And subsection B, two, says program, project, or event recipients are not limited to the requesting organization's membership, but rather the entire community.
Okay, did you say?
No, those two, Ryan's right.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm reading the right one, A, three, and B, two.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
You want me to comment on that a little bit, Ryan? All right, as I read that, A, three is focusing on the eligibility of the organization, and as the type of organization. And B, two, is concentrating on the particular project that's, that for what, or, or, yeah, project or program that, that, that eligible organization is, is requesting funding for. So, so A, three talks about what the eligible organization, primarily, I understand what you're saying, and that they use the same wording in their, but, so the, A, three concentrates on, on looking at the organizations, subpart A concentrates on the organization, B talks about the program. Or, essentially, I think that's what they were getting at.
Okay, so my question in moving forward is, the difference is the word "membership" in number two. And what does, how does that, what do you, how do you clarify that? And then I can kind of go into my reasoning for asking this, so.
When we were talking about it, we were looking at something that basically didn't want funding to go to an organization so that you pay for an event for just their membership. It was, the idea was that this, the funding would go towards something that benefits the community as a whole, not just a organization and its specific membership.
Correct.
That was the way we were discussing it. Pammy, you want to add?
Lisa.
Lisa, sorry, anyone to add?
So I'm Lisa Brown, and I was not going to speak, thank you, Dave. When we had a lot of conversation about exactly that and the terminology, one of the examples that came up, if you will, to simplify the illustration is, say, the Boy Scouts. So instead of saying, there are five Boy Scouts, let's send them to camp, it just sits strictly would, would support five scouts. But if we could say, if the scouts are going to build a bench or mile markers out on the trail, and it benefits the greater good, then we can support something that is for the community, not just the select member individuals. Does that help clarify that a little bit?
Let's say to add to that, you know, the opposite of that, the try and avoid is, if the said same Boy Scouts wanted to have their own event for just themselves, that's what, something we wouldn't necessarily want to provide funding for. So if they wanted to have just a Boy Scout get-together for themselves.
Yep.
That's an area that wouldn't qualify.
Okay, well, let's be more specific, just for my understanding of it. Okay, the gathering place has a membership. Okay, we all understand that. But I just hope everybody understands that you do not have to be a member to participate in the gathering place activities, day in, day out, special programs, et cetera, et cetera. So that's, that was my only contention, is that, that I didn't want this to, to read or be understood, that since we do have membership, for the, I mean, for the greater good of everything, everyone's welcome at any given time, regardless of our membership. And so you're saying that because, even if we have a membership, you understand that because it's for the general good of the community, that's not an issue for us to be concerned with? Is that correct?
So like, Constance in the, Constance in the Park, for example. It's kind of an event that's kind of benefits the community as a whole, in a way. You're doing an event for the community, something like that.
He's saying that.
Right.
Even if you apply for the. It's because they are all open to the public.
Right. This isn't specifically for one event either, this is, you know, for the activities, in a way.
Correct, okay. I, I think that clarifies what I need, I just didn't, you know, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Herb Stensky called today, he's out.
Thank you.
Nevada, and, and had a question, or, or comment, or suggestion regarding that exact language. In hearing this conversation, I actually think I understand his perspective a little bit more. His suggestion was, in B, two, that we say program, project, and/or event recipients are not limited to the requesting organization's membership, but open to the entire community. So replace the word "rather" with "open to."
I like that.
So that would provide an understanding that the gathering place is open to the entire public. The food pantry is open to the entire public, the Milton house is open to the entire public, that it wouldn't be just specifically for members only. You have to have a jacket, I think, if you're gonna do that.
Yeah, I like that.
What do you think, Attorney Chair?
Oh, scrunched out the face. Mark doesn't have a jacket.
That, I, I have not been involved, that was Herb's suggestion today, so.
Yeah. I understand what his suggestion is, and I understand the point that's, that's being made here. A project may or may not be open to the entire community, it may benefit the entire community. So, I, an event may be open to the entire community, or, or I, I don't know. I, I think, let me see. I think if you'd say, but rather benefits the entire community, I, I guess, as opposed to open to the entire community. I, I think that's, is that what Herb's language is getting at? Is that what the audience member's concern was, is to say that this, it's something that can benefit? Because I, I'd have to think about it, I just don't know that a project is necessarily open to an entire community, but it might benefit a community, because a project confers that some group is doing something that, that addresses a community need, that's what.
I see what you're saying. So if we use the Boy Scout example, the Boy Scouts would be doing the project, but the entire community might not necessarily be doing the project.
Right.
Is that what you're talking about?
Benefit from it.
We would benefit, but it wouldn't be necessarily open. Right? Like, a Boy Scouts, I mean, I, I don't know, that's the example we're using, so that's what I was trying to, trying to think of. Like, a troop maybe would be doing something as a project, but I don't think the idea is all 10 of us are gonna show up and do that project.
Part of the goal of the clarity of that, and lots of conversation about that, was really so that it isn't select individuals, it's a greater good, but then there's the ripple effect, that, so this entity takes on the greater good, but potentially, this much of Milton can benefit from it. But I could build a park bench, but maybe I don't go to that park. So, do you start to nitpick those, those kinds of things?
So do you start to nitpick those, those kinds of things? I mean, that's not the intent, the intent is to do good and to provide opportunities for others to take ideas, to spread good. Not to start to limit so much that we can't, but, but the limitation was less about an individual and more about the collective spilling of the goodness.
That makes sense.
I'm okay with the verbiage, rather benefits, but rather benefits the entire.
Based on the discussion here, and again, I'm just coming in late on these points, and there are good, good points to be made, I think. One potential wording is, program, project, and/or event, beneficiaries or beneficiaries are not limited to the requesting organization's membership, but rather the entire community. I think that's what you're getting at, right? That this would be a benefit to, so if we say, instead of saying event recipients, I think that's the confusing part, if we say event beneficiaries are not limited to. Does that make sense? Sorry, I'm working through it as we're talking, but that, I think that's getting at what people are concerned about, is just that language.
If we had a motion, it would be to approve it with the additional editing of, additional editing, that Inga has recorded.
So Mark, you said, program, project, and/or event beneficiaries are not limited to the requesting organization membership, but rather the entire community.
Yes.
Okay, so that would take the place of subpart B two under eligibility?
Not really, just know that this, as I said, there was a lot of discussion back and forth on a lot of these different topics. There's a lot of discussion.
So now we have.
Pretty nice sheet here. Most part, it's pretty straightforward, I think.
So now other communities can call us and ask us, what is your procedure? And we can be like, well, we worked through it.
Speaking on that, actually, in, as part of the beginning of this process, we did actually reach out to a bunch of other communities in Wisconsin for input, as far as how they do the different things. Yeah, basically, different people in the committee each went to, reached out to different groups and organizations, different cities, different townships, things like that, just to see what people do around the area. So that was also inputted into this.
Oftentimes, I'm asked, well, how did the council come to this decision? Or how did a committee come to this recommendation? And I always can say with confidence, it's because the members researched it and took time and were thoughtful about it, and, and that's all I have to say. You know, they did their research and their homework, and so I appreciate that again.
For all the time and work that you put into it, everyone, it's a lot of work.
Make sure you come to the picnic in May, to get some food out of the city for recognition for your volunteering.
I, I'll make a motion that we adopt the residential, oh, no, not that one. The nonprofit contribution policy with the changes that Mark has suggested.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed, the motion carries, thanks.
So one of the items in the policy, it says that applications are due February 20th, so Dave, if you just get that to us tomorrow morning. I was looking at an old version, I'm sorry.
You'll be presenting at the next meeting. All right, general items, any committee reports?
I've already had my committee report, I'm just gonna say.
Thank you, and we'll accept that report.
We have the fire commission meeting tomorrow at the town hall on Second Street.
Seven P M.
Seven.
I live on Second Street, it's not on Second Street.
Oh, the fire commission's meeting at Lisa's house to have dinner? Okay, is that it, or?
I was unable to attend the last gathering place meeting, so I don't know if there are any tickets left for the upcoming.
Yes, there happens to be a few tickets left for our Kevin Fever Dance Saturday night, March 2nd. Doors open at five, dinner at six, dancing and music at seven. Tickets are forty bucks a head, it's one of our primary categories of the year, and we'd love to see all of you and your spouses and your, or significant others join us all. And if you all decide to get one big table, I will personally make sure that you're all together.
So you can have an unposted meeting, yeah.
If we wanted to open the cash bar a little early, that would be fine, we could make that arrangement, so. Thank you for bringing that up, I'd love for, yeah, we have a few tickets left, we'd love to settle out, so.
Okay. Any other announcements from that meeting?
I don't think so, we've got, you know, you'll be keeping folks abreast of some of the upcoming issues and decisions we make regarding the development of property, but that's for another time.
That I've talked a little bit about, so, okay, thank you.
Great. Okay, so are we on staff reports? Library, we'll get you first.
We just finalized our summer programming already, so it's nice to have that out of the way. We are hosting Coffee with the Chief tomorrow, weather permitting, I guess, at one o'clock, so Chief Mark Court will be at the library. And we are receiving a good amount of applications for open positions, so, very exciting.
Great. Don't you have another food truck rally coming up?
Yes, on Sunday, May 5th, we have our food truck rally, first one, we have twelve trucks booked for it.
Inga?
Just a reminder, we have the Women's History Tour coming up on March 10th, it's going to start at 10 a.m. and run until about 1:30. Tickets are thirty-five dollars, and that includes the tour, transportation on the tour, and lunch at Anchor in Newville. And also, the Parks and Recreation Commission met last night, and we reviewed a couple different, well, quite a few different playground options for Water Tower Park, so we'll be moving forward with that, and also bike racks in North Goodrich Park and South Goodrich Park.
Nice, thank you. Howie?
Mostly just, just winter things, a lot of snow, a lot of ice, everybody knows that. But in the next few meetings, though, we'll probably have some proposals for sludge removal, sidewalks, all the usual exciting public work stuff, so.
Dan?
Just getting ready for the audit in about six weeks. Yep, nothing, nothing too exciting here. You all have a check register for January at the first meeting in March, along with the finance bracket.
Sorry, do you want to talk about the upgrade at all, with the accounting software?
Yeah, we're getting an account, our accounting, our accounting software is getting an upgrade on Friday. I don't know exactly all the features, but they've promised that we won't have to pay for future upgrades with this, and probably didn't really have much of a choice here in a couple of years, so we'll all be kind of learning what some of the new ins and outs are, so.
Okay. Al?
Today, the mayor and I met with Congressman Style, newly elected congressman, or United States representative from our area. At the plan commission, the site plan was approved for Midwest tennis facility, so hopefully that process starts very soon, in terms of construction of that. But it'll have to stop snowing first, so maybe in June.
Maybe it'll stop snowing in May, who knows?
Yeah, I can, I can give a little update on that, too. So last week, the Tourism Consortium, or the group that was going to be the Tourism Consortium, met, and after kind of a long discussion, the school district indicated that they were going to postpone their involvement in the Tourism Consortium at this time. So the, the city and the chamber are still gonna move forward with it, and with the JACBB, so instead of a fifteen thousand dollar budget, there'll be a ten thousand dollar budget, so it doesn't really change anything on our end. But the chamber was still very committed to it, and we're still very committed to it. What that does mean, though, is that we will have to bring that agreement back to the council in March to have that reapproved, as it's a substantive change, because it originally was gonna be an agreement between four parties, and now it's an agreement between three parties at this time, so. But good reminder, yes.
And you're all waiting for team building? Well, I have to think of the questions, do we have to do it tonight?
You were too busy laying the sun, come up with a question.
Sorry, I've been on vacation. All right, let's just do something fun. How many inches of snow are we gonna get this snow event? We'll start with how, the one that starts tonight.
One point seven.
One point seven in the next forty-eight hours, or how many hours?
Three a.m. to three thirty.
Three a.m. to three thirty?
Somebody's still one point seven inches in thirty minutes?
Three a.m. to three thirty P M.
Oh, okay, one point seven.
And then maybe rain.
What? Oh. Yeah, whoever wins brings us treats next time. Mark?
I'll go for one point nine inches, within the same time period.
Okay, okay, that'll be our time period. Howie said it.
Closest to without going over?
Yeah, yeah, closest to without going over. Dan?
Two point one.
Is this just snow, or?
No, it's just snow.
Just snow, okay.
Yeah.
I'm gonna say three point one five, just to hold due Dan.
Just snow, just snow.
Okay, one point seven five.
Closest to without, closest to without going over, right? One dollar. One inch.
Two point five.
Two point two.
Following Al's lead, adjusting.
It has to be measurable.
A thirty-second of an inch.
Is it to track a cat, is that?
I'll go four.
Let's use Howie's official measurement, he reports it.
You do remember, I measured the snow, so I got a pretty good chance of winning.
Okay, there has to be a citizen observer.
Just, just have Donnie do it instead.
So just so you know, when you see those posts on Facebook, those are, that's, that's Howie's official, that's Howie's official measurement, so.
Certified by Sullivan.
So if all of a sudden it says like fifteen inches, and you're really only three inches?
So at five o'clock tomorrow, we're gonna see one point seven inches exactly, right?
Pretty close.
All right, one point seven one, right?
Make sure you post it on Facebook.
Well, I'm gonna go into the, to the lower end of it, and I'm gonna say two inches.
Okay.
Have we got a two point four?
We don't have two point four.
All right, I'll go with that.
That's a good smattery.
If we want to include citizens, though, that, that means they bring us the goodies, right?
Any volunteers want to add your name? Maxine?
Maxine.
Bill, anybody? Bill's two point six. Okay, we'll see, anybody else? Okay, all right, well, now I guess we're all hoping for snow, aren't we? Jerry?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed, motion carries.